Call this meeting, do order with a pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. How are we doing?
Good.
Yes, sir. He seems to be, he told me today in the text that he had turned a corner. So he seems, he's feeling better now at this point. Bobby will probably have much better information. Thank you for asking, though, Don. Introduction to those present.
So did everybody, was everybody able to sign in this evening? Jonas, I got you. There's a sign in sheet if you haven't. And the drill goes before you speak if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself. And tonight, members present, we have Mr. Beecher, we have Ms. Van Orte, Mr. Malcolm. I'm Kristin Powers. We have all of our signs up. And we also are on Zoom tonight, so our first ever hybrid model. So on Zoom, we have Jennifer Sullivan, Bob and Martha Shoneman, Nancy Morlino, and Sarah Ludlam. So we've got another good crew. So this is our new device, the Owl. So you are all on camera, you're all on camera, I'm on camera. We're all on camera. So hopefully, this all goes well. So bear with me if I'm a little clumsy here. But for those of you who are on Zoom, if you have any questions, you can just go ahead and put your hand up, raise your hand, and I'll be looking out for you. You can type something in the chat box. Can you hear us okay? If you can't, let me know. Okay, yes, we are heard. Yay. All right. Very good. So we have a couple of additions to our agenda this evening. We have Eric Hall is here tonight to follow up and answer questions in support with Jonas. I think that the two of them might talk a little bit, and maybe John as well, about our scoping, pedestrian accessibility scoping study through the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. There have been some recommendations from that group. So I thought maybe that could be under the zoning administrators' report, but I don't know where you might like to discuss it.
Did you put it on the agenda?
That's what I'm putting out there now. I don't know where it best fits.
I think it's fine. I think it's sincere here, and I think it'd be best under this.
Sounds good to me.
There's also an addition, an update for the board about an extension request that I had submitted through V-Trans, the grants and aid project that we have working on. I did get a response from them, so wanted to talk about that, which I thought could be discussed during the road foreman's report. And also, Mr. Wesco has requested to have some time on the agenda this evening to follow up on some topics. Again, not sure where you'd like to have that. But that is the third and final addition. And maybe under the zoning umbrella. But not sure what you, what you think.
Is that all right with you when we get to zoning administrator, Mike?
Sure.
Continue on with that. A lot of your questions are for him anyway, so. Okay.
We still have the ARPA funds under unfinished business, which I think that's still good.
We do have those.
Perfect. That's all.
Approval of the minutes. Did anybody see anything in the minutes that were?
I think the date was wrong.
The date was wrong. So you passed the test. It was the draft minutes from August 24th. I was just making sure everybody reads them. So I did update that. It's not the 10th. Other than that, I move we accept the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Host? Carrie. Thank you. Announcements.
So I have one announcement this evening. Julie Mack, our treasurer, had put in her memo a couple of weeks ago about the mandatory shift to 10-digit dialing throughout the state of Vermont in order to adhere to the new suicide prevention hotline or the three-digit number that you can call for that. So in order to do that, the state has to go to a 10-digit dialing. So starting October 24th, it'll be mandatory to dial 802 before you dial any number, even if it's just your neighbor's landline across the street. So friendly reminder. That's the only announcement.
Could you give us an update on Rich?
He's doing very well. And he's trying to get his head back into taking care of business. So he should be, should be involved. He should be home watching, watching as we speak.
And I also, I texted with Keith today, and Keith said that he's steadily improving. And because right now, he's wanting it to go quicker and quicker. And I said, take your time, let yourself heal. But he's, he's working on next steps and stuff like that. And so it sounds like everything is going good for him, too. Zoning administrator report.
So a couple of things. Working on a couple subdivision applications. So people have to look into some, when some lots were created to see if they could get a waiver. I'm not sure it's called a waiver, but it's a reduction in size of lots, lot acreage. Just received a letter of map amendment from FEMA for another parcel that people are looking to do in addition to the house or garage. I don't remember. It would happen over the summer. And it was in the flood zone. So I suggested that, you know, that they look at hiring a surveyor and see if the dwelling was outside of the flood zone, which it was. So they just sent me a copy of the letter of map amendment, so I will process the zoning application that they submitted months ago. Let's see. I had, I had prepared with the help of Sue Porter, Sue Laporte, getting some information on together on the Act 250 application for the Ropley Farm. And put that together, Sue put that together, and some other stuff that I had put together, and sent it on to Merrill Bent as a result of the Mike Wesco's request, uh, excuse, Mike Wesco's request for issuing a zoning violation. So I sent that on to Merrill. We had a quick discussion. She sent me some information that I have not responded to yet, which I will hopefully do that tomorrow if I don't get hung up on some of the applications. I also had a conversation last week with the owner of the property, of the quarry. And he was, he did not receive a copy of the violation, the notes of violation, July 6th of 2021, for air quality stuff. So I made a copy of that for him. Also asked him for if he knew where I could find some, put my hands on some documents regarding closure plan for the, for the quarry that was prepared for an Act 250 permit back in the early 2000s. He said they had hired an engineering firm. He wasn't sure he could put his hands on it. I thought it would be quicker than me trying to find something here, if it's here. And I could also contact the Act 250 office and see if I could get my hands on the closure plan.
Most of that is online at Act 250?
Well, yes.
Most of that is online at Act 250, actual site plan?
Yeah, Rick, Rick Overhurch sent me the link.
Okay.
And I have not opened up the link yet.
Okay.
So anyway, because I have a couple of things going on in other communities, that's why I reached out to Rick. I don't have the capabilities of downloading all that stuff from home, so.
They may have an extra full-size set of the entire StanTech plan if you'd like me to drop it off tomorrow.
Who has, do you have it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, I believe I do have an extra set.
Okay. So, but like I said, I don't have the link. I can't run Pollitt stuff up in Poldy or Castleton where I work the other. So the only, I don't have the capabilities of downloading that stuff. So there's a lot to read, but I do have the links from Rick Overhurch. The, my understanding is that the air quality people were supposed to be here to do some air quality tests either last week or this week for the blasting issue that they had recently. So I could follow up with the person who signed that.
Actually, they've issued a citation for the blasting already.
I saw.
I have copies for the board.
Is that July 6th, 2021?
I think you're referring to the air, or air quality violations would be July 6th. This is from the July 29th non-notification of blasting and non-operation.
None of that stuff comes to my office. I don't know what it does.
Would you like that?
Sure, sure.
How about the board?
Sure.
I'm awfully surprised that we don't get anything. At least I don't get anything.
I think that's a major missing link. I think there's a copy.
Yeah, I can pass them along so you don't trip.
Thank you.
Well, you know, this is interesting. Michaela Stickney and we've gone around and around on the, the, what's his name? Mr. Bonnet's information, which they have not moved on in any of my requests. So this is not surprising that we don't get anything, so. Interesting.
As far as the town zoning, though, that's indifferent to the Act 250 permits, correct?
I guess, yes. Yeah. But there's a lot of information. For instance, when the permit expires, because I don't remember seeing anything in the local, in the local permit application back in 2006 or 2008, or whatever it is, as to when the permit was, or for the length of the time the permit was approved.
Twenty years.
So it was 2026.
Yes.
That's what Mr. Mason informed me last week. So there's a lot of documents that I don't have. So yes, but again, some of the zoning issues that you raised, you know, pertained to.
Yeah. When the site is it, is it appropriate?
Uh, that will be.
Because the two properties in question that have been encroached upon have been surveyed by state licensed surveyors. It's pretty easy to see the lines where they are.
Well, that's, again, you know, I don't know. Maybe you should be addressing the board. But that's one of the questions that, that I spoke with Merrill Bent, and she wanted to know if any surveys have been filed and recorded here?
Yes.
Okay, they're all filed and recorded there.
Mine is. I can't speak for Mr. Evans, which was the property. It should be.
And I'll follow up there. So there's all kinds of things that Merrill asked me, and I said I would look at them. It's not the only thing that I do, you know, for the four, four or five hours a week that I do here. So there's a lot of, lot of things to look up. And I said I would get to Merrill, and I will. And I will talk, and I will talk to Michaela Stickney about keeping us on the list. I just wonder if she had, she had, she contacted, okay, she sent something to Mark Mason, Greg Mason, Charles Mason, and John Thrasher, and we're not even on the list. So something that I'll talk to her about, so.
If it would facilitate, do I have basically everything, that 250?
If you want to leave it here, that's fine. But I want to talk to Michaela Stickney about why we're not receiving it. It's one thing to talk to you about it, which I'm glad to take it from you.
Yeah, how about as far as?
But I want to make sure that I, she understands where we are.
Yeah.
So I don't have to go digging for this stuff.
Yeah, as far as making the copies. I had some copies made today at about, at a dollar a piece. There's probably 150 copies.
I'll be glad, I'll be glad to take anything that you have. I'll be glad to take anything she has, and I'll be glad to read it, and I'll be glad to share it with Merrill Bent, and make sure we're all on the same page before I start telling you what I'm going to do and what I'm not going to do. Okay, there's a lot, there's a lot to dig, there's a lot to, you know, to look for.
Yes, I understand that.
So anyway. And so that's where I'm at with, you know, this, this quarry issues.
Actually, Rich Hewlett, prior to his accident, did walk the property lines with the, the two property owners and other individuals that were interested on the Saturday. I think it was the Saturday before he got hurt. So he has information. I don't expect him to be even considering that it's even in his, in his mind of concern.
Going back to 2006, there were several motions made to waive the second part requirements.
Only for Kelly Hill Road from the town of Pollitt?
No. That's one of them.
Okay.
There was a second one that was broad in general. And so it was broad in general, didn't say Quarry Hill Road. Excuse me, whatever.
Kelly Hill.
One, one was, the other one was not. So there are two motions, and, you know, that did not say for the road.
Are you talking about the two different permits of '06 and '08?
No, they was all on one piece of paper. And, and again, I don't have it in front of me. But it's in that pile of information that I gave to Merrill Bent. And so whoever, and again, I don't know who made the motion, but it was broad in general and did not just specify the road, so.
If I may, Jonas, I remember looking at that same document. I think that one of the motions was at the ZBA meeting, and the other one was at the select board meeting, or something like that.
There was.
There were a couple of different ones, yeah.
Yeah, but again, there was, again, the select board, and that, that's another issue. The select board, as I recall, they don't make, they don't make decisions on zoning. They make motions on to approve zoning regulations, but not zoning applications. So, you know, these are the kinds of things that Merrill and I had some discussions on. So the legality of whatever decision was made, you know, I don't know. So, but these are conversations that Merrill and I are having. So anyway. So just to let you know.
Thank you.
There's a lot to digest, but that's not the only thing I do within the time period that I'm here. And, you know, I want to make sure that if I get a zoning application, that I get it out within the required 30 days. Otherwise, it takes effect. And so I've had things sit here for two weeks. Somebody said, well, you know, I've been waiting two weeks for the permit. Well, you know, it's, I've been waiting maybe eight hours. You know, that's, that's the nature of it, because I'm not here every day. So. So there's a lot to do other than just research this one issue. Like I said, I've got two subdivision applications that I've got to hopefully take care of one tomorrow and maybe the other. I doubt it. There's a lot, a lot to go through. And, you know, I don't have time to look through land records. That's not my job, looking at land records. People are supposed to bring all that information forward so we can make a decision, so. Same thing for the FEMA, for the flood zone area. I want to make sure that I don't give out zoning applications that are in the flood zone. Otherwise, if I do, and we do have a flooding issue, and somebody puts in a reimbursement, a claim for reimbursement, you know, the town is, is like, is, is subject to losing their flood insurance. And I want to make sure I don't do a stupid thing. You know, so it does, it does take some time. So you have to go to the plan atlas. I go to the natural resource atlas, make sure all that stuff is on, you know, that, that I can interpret, so. Anyway, that's, that's what I have. And we had this, we had this transportation project, so.
Let's move on to, do you have any more questions, Mike, for the board?
I do, but until Jonas or Merrill Brent, that response to what I asked last week, I don't think it's prudent at this time to get into it because there's no information.
So this certainly is, is an ongoing discussion that is, the information is.
Who does have the final say on a zoning violation, though? Is it the zoning administrator or the attorney?
No, go ahead.
Well, the zoning administrator will make a decision without having enough information to, to issue a notice of violation. And you can appeal that decision, you know, to the DRB, and then the DRB would have a hearing. You know, there's a succession of things that need to happen.
Yeah, I understand that.
And I want to make sure that they happen correctly. So, and that's what I'm having conversations with, with Merrill. But she's asking me to look up some information, which I don't have.
Okay.
And I don't have a home office where I can run pages upon pages like I used to. And, you know, that's just the nature of it.
So one last question I have for Mike is, if I come down here, maybe tomorrow, and I make 150 copies for him, and my foot in the bill, because they charged me a dollar a page today, so that's 150 bucks. There's at least 150.
You had 150 pages that you copied?
No, today I copied five. But I'm saying what I need to give to him is probably about 150 pages worth.
Okay.
I make the suggestion, you know, if he wants to do it, fine. But I'm going to ask the Act 250 office to provide it.
To get it, to provide it.
You know, and we have not.
Can't be better than that.
Okay? I mean, if you want to come down and do that and tie it to the machine, because I tell you, the times that I've been.
I really don't want to, that's what I'm saying.
Neither do I, because times I've been trying to get stuff out on a timely basis, I can't get out on a timely basis because the machine's been used.
Yeah.
So anyway, paper jams, people are using it, and so on. And I'm only here, you know, Wednesday, so.
So you're gonna, you're gonna get this information from the Act 250?
I'm going to ask them for everything.
It's their responsibility to provide it to us, so.
Yeah, you don't see my name, you don't see the town's name on any of it.
We, we weren't aware of any of this stuff.
Yeah, so, yeah. And it's ridiculous. I mean, it's insane. It's not the first one.
Here's another.
Oh, I got the number.
No, this is.
So from Michaela's?
That's the violations from 2016, 2016.
2016, okay, thank you.
So you're all set till we get more information, then, for this, this meeting tonight? We'll continue on this progress and?
Yeah, because we could, we could belabor this till nine o'clock, not get any further.
So there's really not much more we can do right now till more information, we get more opinions from Merrill, and et cetera. Okay, thank you, Mike. Frank?
Some of the parties were wondering why the town wasn't getting notification. And I don't know if Act 250, folks by law, are supposed to notify violations, in which case, maybe the legislature could address that, and the people would get it automatically.
I don't know whether it's required by law, but common sense. It makes, you know, it's, it's just common sense.
So let's move on to the pedestrian accessibility scoping study. And you're here, Eric Hall from.
Yep, so Eric Hall, here.
Thank you for joining us.
You're welcome. I'm happy to be here. Regional planner at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. So working as a municipal project manager for the town on this V-Trans bike ped grant-funded scoping project. We established the selection committee, which was made up of myself and transportation planner at the planning commission, Devin Neary, as well as Jonas and John, and then Peter Pochop, who is the V-Trans project supervisor. So we had put out the request for proposal for the study, received three proposals from engineering firms, and the selection committee then met to rate the proposals and then make a recommendation, which has been provided in the memo that was shared with the board. Through the selection process, we narrowed it down to Fussin O'Neill. And they, you know, they received the highest rating. Rating is based on experience of the firm and the team, relative projects that they've completed, as well as their attention to the scope and their overall presentation. And John really noticed their attention to, really, the local concern that surrounds, or, you know, that's motivated by this, this study. And that's, they were the one firm to highlight speed through, you know, through this area. So with that, you know, the selection committee recommends hiring Fussin O'Neill to, to perform this study. The study is paid for in part by this bike ped grant and then the town match. Because the cost proposal from the engineer came in slightly higher than what was available to be paid out of that, considering the, the fee for our project management services, we reached out to the consultant and came to an agreement that the Rutland Regional Planning Commission can take on some of the tasks, such as compiling some of the base maps, doing the pedestrian and vehicle counts. And so that is something that can be paid through our transportation planning initiative funds, which is through Devin's program, which then keeps the town match to, we already agreed upon $6,000. So I guess with that, if you all have any questions?
Mike?
Yes.
There's a few questions. I think it's important that we assume Jonas was part of this selection committee. But I don't know if it's more correct for us to vote to allow, allow you in retrospect to, to be part of that? Would that bring any comfort to?
Yes, I want to act on my own interest. I'm saying I'm interested in transportation planning. I believe transportation planning is part of planning a zone. And it would be nice if the board felt that I should participate or I could participate. I'd have clearance rather than just jump in and not have any authority to jump in, so.
That makes perfect sense.
If you'd like a motion, I'd make that motion in retrospect and. And you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Karen Moncada. Where am I going? Where'd I get that from?
Would you mind saying your motion again for me, please?
Okay, that the zoning administrator, Jonas Rosenthal, is acting in the capacity, which would include the selection in this consultant for the pedestrians study.
Good with that?
Yeah, I could also try to consider that Jonas is, along with John and Devin, at the planning commission, is on the Pollitt Transportation, Transportation Group.
Committee.
Committee. Right.
So how about motion made to include zoning administrator Jonas Rosenthal to work alongside the Pollitt Transportation Committee? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think you'd be part, wouldn't you, to be included?
Okay.
Be part of the Pollitt Transportation.
Be part of.
With John and Jonas. Uh, John, Jonas, and Devin.
Just to give some insight into the selection process, I mean, there was one, one of the firms highlighted that they were going to use robots. And I resisted that and said, we don't need robots. We need people with a pulse. we don't need robots, we need people with a pulse or with an ascending pulse as they reach that intersection.
Frank?
Do we have a formal transportation committee? Cause I don't remember.
Okay, we'll, we'll finish this and then.
So we have Bob Jones moved.
Yeah.
John seconded or?
Or John, John moved and Bob seconded.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Okay, it's official, Jonas, thank you.
John, I just have one other thing I want to clear out. Not years ago, months ago, when the town considered applying, we had talked, or at least I raised the possibility for the local match to be taken, we had an account for, it's called, I don't know what it's called, I wish Julie was here, I think it's called zoning, not zoning administrator, but zoning. They were used in the past for planning studies, so I don't know if there's money in the transportation budget, but there certainly is money in the zone for studies. There's like $7,000 that hasn't been used for the last couple of years. So unless you had, maybe 2017 or 16, that you folks utilized that account to do the zoning update, but that, that account hasn't been touched, or just rarely touched. So my suggestion is to utilize the local match out of that fund because it is planning. But you don't have to do anything now because we don't have any bills and my understanding is the study was going to be done over possibly two fiscal years, it would be done by August.
Right.
Another fiscal year or so. I mean, if you, if you did two halves, you know, if there's money covering the local match, if you so choose.
Thank you.
It does extend to Sheldon Store, there was some.
Right.
Discussion about that, but it goes from there to the barn, State Barn.
Uh, there, yep, to just past the post office and to the church and then down to the library.
Okay. Kristen?
Julie is virtually in attendance this evening and she did add that there is money in that account, is not sure of the exact amount as of this moment, but there is perhaps a few grand plus.
Right, she ran that report for me and it's on my desk somewhere.
I could have one more thing and then if there's any other questions, this will be all I have, but in looking at the comparable studies that Fussin O'Neil has done, one of them resulted in an additional speed study, which a specific speed study isn't built into this scope, but it's, it's something to think about, you know, which may be a potential result or could accompany this, this scoping study down the road.
Could you tell where Fussin O'Neil are out of?
The project manager is based out of Manchester, but they've worked on other projects in some surrounding towns, so they have, you know, they have some insight into this area and, you know, have done projects across Vermont, but have also recently done projects in Rattler County.
Do we have to approve that tonight?
Yes, so as long as, you know, it's in the minutes that the recommendation to hire Fussin O'Neil does need to be approved by the board.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll make that motion to approve or contract with Fussin O'Neil for the Polit Transportation scoping study.
I'll second that.
Is any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried, thank you. Is there any more questions for Devin? Excuse me, Eric? Jonas?
When we were reviewing those applications, I raised the question as to when AOT was going to be doing any upgrades to the 430, possibly for, to combine the improvements into this study. Did you know that by now?
I don't know that we got a definitive timeframe for that, but, you know, that is an important thing to keep in mind is trying to tie in the planning process to that, you know, that time construction as well. So I can see if I can get some more details for you on that, but I guess just the last thing I'll add is considering Fussin O'Neil has been approved to, you've approved Fussin O'Neil being hired as consultant, the next step is we will work with the engineers to compile a contract, which will then be presented, you know, to the board for execution, approval on execution.
Excellent. Thank you very much for joining us tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else on a zoning administrator? You good? Thank you for coming down. Planning commission?
Nothing at this meeting.
Nothing yet, okay, excellent. The road foreman's report, um, have you, anybody talked to the road crew this week at all or?
I waved at them this morning, but.
That's a good start.
Rich and I met with Dale today. All we really discussed was primarily is the tractor that we purchased. They're making some adjustments, taking care of some things that they're responsible for, capital tractor, and then also Dale presented us with a quote. We had, had a discussion about, we have leaf buildup in the ditches, leaves and branches and whatnot on the roads, when they go to grade the roads, you can't grade the road until that stuff's removed. So normally they try to grade it up into more or less piles that can be scooped up with a payloader or the backhoe and disposed of. And also culverts plug up, fill up with leaves, they get blown into the culverts and those have to be cleaned out by hand. This blower would not only prep the roads and the ditches for grading, prior to grading, but also going into winter to clean out the culverts so that they don't plug up and freeze up. So it's up to us when we want to move on it, but the description and the quote is there and it's, Dale, Dale thinks that it would be a really good investment because we have a tractor to operate it now, to mount it right on and utilize it.
Now, I believe that they said that Rupert did the same thing with their tractor. I think they're in partnership with Sangate, and Sangate bought the blower, but for two things, it also helps remove any debris that ends up in the road as you're mowing, because it's at the very end of the tractor and, and it does indeed clean the, on the smaller roads, especially like my road and stuff like that, the leaves turn into quite a, quite a bunch of mess when, especially if they don't get degraded in time, it balls up and leaves, you know, wastes a lot of road material that could be smoothed out, so I think a blower would work excellent.
Yes, and there's very, very little moving parts and it does come with a 10-year warranty and stuff, so there's no.
This quote is from H.P. Fairfield for 5,500. H.P. Fairfield is, is the place up in, sets up all our trucks, puts the bodies into snowpiles and all that stuff up in there and they do roadside mowing equipment, stuff like that. The only thing that I would say is maybe we should see if, if Kevin can quote a comparable blower, right, Kevin watches at Capital where we bought the tractor, just so we have more than one option, it seems like that would be a reasonable.
Is it PTO driven or hydraulic?
PTO.
It comes off the bay.
With a three-point hitch, right?
Right, and then it does have an electric 12-volt spout that you can control from the tractor, so you can turn, turn the spout 360 degrees to be able to, to blow any direction to, and Rupert, the Rupert guys have talked to Dale about it and said it's, you know, it's great, they can line it right up with a culvert and, and blow the leaves and debris right out of a culvert with, without any problems whatever, whatsoever.
And they, they were, I mean, Gary doesn't have one that size, but he has a couple smaller ones that go on machines, are pretty comparable in size, but I mean, you can wad wet leaves in a pack like that, you just take your time and keep going at it and, and they fly. It's just quite, it's, it's a very, very valuable tool for.
It's like a 4H blower.
Well, actually, these are, these are turbine blowers.
Oh, turbine.
So they have quite, the one, the one that, the one that he has on, on one of his machines has a pipe and it says, the, says it'll support a basketball this high off the exhaust and I believe it. They're, they're very powerful, but it sounds very similar to this. I think it actually is the same brand, it just goes on a different machine, a different mount. I think it would be a great thing, but I think it would be a good idea to have a couple more quotes, just, just at $5,000, it, it seems like it's just due process that makes it most sense. Can you reach out to Kevin?
Sure, yes.
And we'll see if we can think of somebody else that may, may be able to do something similar. I'll let you keep that for now. Is the tractor delivered?
Yes, yes, they used it, there's a couple minor things that they're fixing on it, they, they took it in and trade, they went all through it, got the best of their knowledge, got it ready and then the guys, you know, started using it, had a couple issues with things and they're taking care of it to fix it.
Okay.
I have two things.
Yes.
When I, when you're ready.
Go ahead.
About the grants and aid.
Uh huh, oh, okay, I have one more question regarding kind of basic road, the culvert in West Palat that we were trying to accomplish, do you?
I don't know where we're at with that.
Can you try and do some research on that, cause Rich, Rich had gone over it with the guys and they had a pretty good plan and they were going to work with Bruce to.
Yep.
Get that all together so that we can alleviate any of those issues before they happen, if we get, get it in before winter so we don't have spring falls and messes. So we'll keep, we'll keep pushing on that, Bruce, to try and get that to come together. So, and that was the only, about the only thing I had in mind, so grants and aid.
So I reached out to Stephanie Bork, hopefully, I'm not sure if I'm butchering her last name, requesting an extension just due to the roads crew being short-staffed because the grants and aid project is required to be completed by October 31st. She wrote me back letting me know that at this time V Trans is not offering any extensions to the SFY 21 construction project deadline, but she has been advised to recommend that the town consider re-scoping our project to fewer segments. She's available to discuss options for pivoting and if so, so that we can still maximize the use of the funds, but they have to be used by the end of October. So I included you and Rich on that, on that, she included you as well.
I did see that.
Just passing that along.
So one of the things Rich and I had talked about was the fact that it's on the Kelly Hill Road is where we were going to work on it, but being that far away from the material which we'd be getting in West Palat, to haul it with two trucks would be too much time to accomplish the project and we initially had worked with, had thought we were going to be able to work with Rupert and then they would supply trucks so that we could have four trucks hauling and get the project done quicker. So now with Keith out of the picture, we would have to hire another operator and Rupert is no longer in a position to be able to support those two trucks, they have other work that came up that they need to go. So even though we have some money at this point to, to try and pull that off with, with being down one man and hire another person that would be suitable to fill that position and still not have trucks enough to make, you know, make, make the job go quickly enough so we could still do the fall mowing on the block top and the fall grading, which would also basically need to be done by, you know.
Similar timeframe.
The end of October, early, early November, all the fall grading needs to be done, the mowing needs to be done now. So it really, it put too much of a cramp, so Rich and I both felt that it wasn't really prudent to, even if we lose the grant money, we, the opportunity is still there and yes, it is some money, but it maybe would cost us more to try to pull it off than the grant would recover, so. That's, that's kind of where we're at with that, so.
So would you?
You've probably talked to him a little bit about that too.
So I guess let me know how I can support in that, you know, if we want to continue to talk to Stephanie about seeing if there's a sensible way for, for us to pivot or if we're going to step away.
I think that, I think that we kind of just need to, just, we just kind of just let it roll out and see, you know, maybe, not say no right now, but.
See where we're at.
But it, you know, you know, maybe the beginning of October, something changes around a little bit and we might be able to pull it off. But don't close the door until it has to, but.
Okay.
Frank?
Would the grant cover the cost of pivoting to hiring a trucking?
No, it's just a straight, it's a straight payment. And I believe in, yeah, it's, it's just a monetary, you get X amount of money to do it and.
So you can do anything you want with that money?
No, they, you gotta do this to the road and you get X amount of money toward fixing that road up.
Getting the material up there is the question, can you hire getting the material up there from a contractor?
It's working on about five.
And have it paid for by the grant?
Two weeks, so one truck. It's, I just asked it Bobby quick, for the amount of money that the grant is, you could get one truck in not even two weeks and it's not, it's not going to be effective overall, cause you still need to hire, you need to lease an excavator or bulldozer to push the rubbish out and even hauling with our truck, three trucks wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be enough of a savings to make it worth it. It would be better off to wait and, and deal, and when we can team up with Rupert, so we can go at it with four trucks, because it still makes the road a mess for a long period of time when you don't go at it with four trucks.
So you're going to punt and not pivot like she was saying, the option.
Basically, and, and a lot of it has to do with the fact that, that Keith isn't available and stuff, so. Cause you'd still have to hire another guy, so you'd have, not only would you have to hire a truck, but you'd have to hire an operator, so. And there's another pretty good chunk of change to get somebody that, that could take on that job, you know, take on the responsibility of, of running the job too, not just, you know, just showing up and sitting on a piece of equipment, so. So I think we should just kind of, just kind of roll with it and see how it goes, see if something changes, but at, at this point, we're not really sure how we're going to act. I guess we just gotta kind of leave it vague whether the, we don't.
She said she's available, if anybody would like to, to contact her, so, so we can do that. And then the only other thing that I had was I've noticed that the radar sign was put up in Palat Village, that's where it's coming in, and I've noticed many, many people breaking and I think a lot of people are slowing down and I've gone on a couple walks and haven't felt the wind whipping through my hair, so, yeah, so that's great, so thank you.
And the other one is in solid, in West Palat Village in front of the, the town garage kind of as you're coming into the.
Yes.
The village center, so to speak.
Question regarding those signs?
Yes.
The scoping study that's happening, so when is the scoping study supposed to happen here?
In Palat Village?
Yes, Palat Village.
Spin me through.
Within, you know, the agreement, it will take a couple weeks from there, they'll probably start working another month or so.
Okay, so would those signs affect that study? That they're causing cars to slow down from the town?
I don't know that we would necessarily be looking at speed right away. I don't know that we would necessarily be, um, looking at speed right away. So likely they'll be looking more at just pedestrian flow and how, um, you know, that's impacted by traffic as well as they'll be looking at line of sight or, um, you know, lots of factors. Speed is definitely a component, but that won't be necessarily part of that specific scope.
Okay.
And those can be moved if we need people to start speeding up again.
So Eric, when would be, when would, could we apply for another scoping study to go to the west side of town?
Um, I'm not 100% sure on when those deadlines are, but I can look into that. So for West Paulette, I can look into when the deadlines for those studies, those grants would be.
Okay, that would be great.
Question I had is are those signs, does the town own?
Yes.
We just bought them.
Okay.
We bought two with the, the solar panels and stuff and we put them on, on a weighted base so that they can be moved to different locations.
And we're buying two in the next fiscal year. So we'll end up with a total of four. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Frank?
Aren't we in the next fiscal year, the, this fiscal year?
Yeah, but, but there's no money till taxes come in and then we kind of gotta, we kind of gotta roll till next year before we have enough money to cover operating expenses and then buy the fun stuff.
Um, Jennifer Sullivan has her hand raised.
Uh huh.
May she say something about this topic now? Okay, hold on one sec. Let's see. Jennifer?
Hi.
Oh, cool.
I love this. Julie, thank you so much for this. Um, I would just want to ask about the, uh, location of the West Paulette sign.
Okay.
Um, in my opinion, it's far out of town to really, I'm thrilled that it's there. But it's, I think it needs to be closer to downtown.
Okay. Um, we certainly, they just put that one together and, and kind of picked a spot to test it, but that was the whole point of the movable basis. So we certainly can try and come up with another, another place in, in town and see where, see where we think goes. If you have some suggestions, please, um, send them to us and then we'll work with, and with the road crew and see if they have some other ideas and we'll try and come up with a different spot that may be more suitable.
Okay, I do have some suggestions. While send them to Kristen.
Great.
Don't be like Kristen and want it in front of your house stuff.
It's not in front of my house. It's not in front of my house. It's not.
Everyone wants it in front of their house.
Okay. Anyway, moving right along to assessors.
I think we're pretty much used up the road form and support, right?
Yep. I have nothing from the assessors.
Okay, town clerk?
I, I can make a comment about the assessor.
Okay, please do.
That we, I think both inspection committees of the B C A have done their inspections.
Yeah.
The third, the applicant, uh, uh, canceled their inspection date because of COVID apparently. Um, and was given options to, to set up a possibility of other dates, uh, to reschedule and in the time period that, that was asked for.
It has to be before the 14th, right? When we're meeting again?
Well, it was Friday at the end was the time. And, uh, that in conjunction with our lawyer and nothing has been received. So we're assuming that that, uh, is, uh, waiving their right to, uh, to allow an inspection and thus continue their appeal. So, so we'll only have two to consider on the 14th next week.
Okay. Good, thank you. Okay, town clerk?
Hey, um, looks like Deb is just coming in, but there is just one overweight permit that required signature this evening. And that was all from the town clerk's office in the memo. Deb, I see you're here on Zoom. Is there anything that you wanted to add to your report? It's the town clerk's memo happening right now. Thank you.
We move right along to town treasures, do we not move that, huh?
Julie, are you wanting to speak your report or would you like for me to do it?
Hello, this is Julie. Um, no and no, I guess here, I'll just do it. Uh, two warrants this week. Um, I didn't change the date on the top of the memo, so I apologize. Fable was 8,395.39. Account fable is 116, 314 and 18 cents, which includes the tractor. General fund monies, $10,975. Highway, 34, $600.8 cents.
So I guess this is.
Weighted burden, $249 cents. And the equipment fund was $79.33. Um, I have forwarded something to you all on the, on source well registration, which Kevin Waters had sent, filled me order to get the governmental rates for the new mower head. So we're looking for input on that.
What, what is it? Just, all you have to do is just, uh, fill out the paperwork or something, Julie?
Yeah, it seems like it. I've never heard of it, but I look, I was able to look at the municipality, but we're not a member. It's like nonprofits and governmental entities can sign up and then they get discounted rates. And Kevin said it was like at least 25%.
Yeah, okay.
I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do that then if we just sign up.
It sounds like a great idea. I know that in New York State, they always used to have a, a state bidding, a state contract they used to call it and it saved a lot of municipalities quite a great deal of money as opposed to private individual from buying a lot of equipment. So seems like the best thing to do for sure.
Okay. I will go ahead and get that done, um, and get the number to Kevin then so we can, he'll have it for the new mower head.
Excellent.
Um, and then the other thing for you guys is that I am amending my tax collection policy, which the last time I did my policies for my office, I did that they're my policies, but I asked for the blessing of the select board. And so I sign and then you Mike, as the chair, would sign too. I left one copy on the table that is highlighted in the pink where it's changed. Cause it, most of it's the same.
Okay.
Can you pass that down so we can have a look at it also?
Or you could read it out loud.
So the pink part is the new part?
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, coins, not more than a dollar's worth of coins, not more than 50 bucks, five, one to five.
Yeah, that seems to make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
I mean.
That just, that just seems like a very good idea.
Paying like a thousand one dollar bills?
Yeah, something like six plus times that, yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you. Um, and then after, after I finish this at Pepper Collection, I'm gonna continue working through the B L C type financial questionnaire that we've been plugging away at, um, a little bit one month at a time. And I may hopefully find some time to review my policies and make some amendments and maybe add some new policies. And that's it for me.
So do we even need to, uh, vote on this? Do we need to make a motion or just sign it because it is your policy, right?
Um, yeah, it's my policy. So as long as the consensus of the board is that it's okay for you, Mike, to, to sign it with, cause I'm asking for your blessing.
Yeah.
Everybody seems fine with that. So here we go.
Thank you.
My tax selection is going well?
Yeah, very busy. I don't have a handle on numbers at all, but.
People are, people are bringing you money. That's all that matters, right?
Right.
Good. Okay. And.
Julie, I'll put this on your desk.
Okay. Um, and so that, that policy takes back was signed dated to take effect today.
Okay. All right. Um, yes.
Is the policy posted?
How would, how would Harley find what the policy says?
Oh, just anybody.
Is it, is it posted somewhere, Julie, or?
So my policies are posted on the town website. This new policy, since I just signed it today, um, is not gonna be up yet, but tomorrow I will be emailing our, um, website person and we'll get it up.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Is it time to approve the warrants?
Right.
I'll move that we approve the warrants.
I'll second.
John will second the warrants. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Thank you. And anybody have any other questions for Julie? I guess not. Thank you for joining us tonight, Julie.
Yep, thanks.
Have a good night.
Bye.
I think we should make a policy that anyone on Owl has to reveal their fuzzy slippers.
Well, in the future, I think the goal is to have the people who are joining us virtually visible on a screen somewhere so we can look at them and not look at the owl. Cause I find myself looking at the owl and it's dumb. Julie is not the owl. That's really quite an experience here. It's very fun.
Was there anything from emergency management?
Yes. Um, I will share that with you. So from Bob Morlino, a report summarizing August of 2021, attended a COVID-19 briefing, attended a Hurricane Henry or Henri briefing on 8/21, 21 and 8/22. Also, there's been a request that came from the state level that Bob reiterated to approve Bob Morlino and Jay Loopke as the voting members of the regional emergency management committee for the town of Paulette. And Bob sent this brief update, um, in July of 2021, regional local emergency planning committees, L E P Cs, were replaced with one statewide L E P C in accordance with statute section 1220 V S A subsection six. The emergency management division has established regional emergency management committees, R E M Cs, which shall coordinate emergency planning and preparedness activities to improve their region's ability to prepare for, respond to and recover from all disasters. Vermont Emergency Management has finalized the state guidance for the regional emergency management committees. There's an attachment. It outlines the membership and responsibilities of these new committees. And as local emergency management directors, you, along with one other additional local emergency services representative appointed by your select board, will comprise the voting members of the R E M C. So Bob is seeking just a motion from the board to formally establish that he and Jay will be the voting members for Paulette.
I will make that motion.
All right, I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. So John and Jay, uh, Bob and Jay.
Okay. Thanks. Sorry. Okay.
Anything from Jennifer?
Yes. Um, Jennifer, would you like to share your report this evening? Hold on, you're muted still. I'm asking you to unmute. There you go.
Um, so I, um, in our, I met with a citizen of West Paulette, uh, regarding excessive trash and multiple unregistered vehicles in his neighbor's yard on Uwood Street. I believe the board is familiar with that property. Um, I referred to gave a card for, um, multiple vehicles and for a potentially unregistered dog. Otherwise, that property is not a rental, so there really isn't a lot more that, um, that a town health officer can provide. Uh, Bob and I did a follow-up inspection of a resident, um, Route 133. And, um, I had complained from a resident of, uh, Forest Farm Road about a single sighting of one rat. She said there was no trash at their home. They had quite a raise from their nearest neighbor. She had called a pest control company. So we looked at it. That's it?
Anybody have any questions for Jennifer? All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you. Waste water is pretty much.
I haven't received anything.
Seems to be running, running as good as could be expected. We still have a few ideas that we're tossing around, but haven't really come up with any, anything to, uh, to make any big advancements on the rate or anything like that. So. And the performance of the, of the facility is still about the same. Every, the question of having to show up every day is definitely directed from, because it's a direct discharge and it's just, it is what it is. It's, it's all regulated through all the permitting process and stuff like that. Cause it directly discharges into a stream. It has to be monitored on a daily basis. So. And that's all I have there. Old or unfinished business?
I have a follow-up question, Mike. I don't know if this is.
Okay. Sure.
The zoning administrator is appointed by the select board or how does he, how does the zoning administrator?
He's a town employee. He's hired.
So he, 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 he works for the town then as a subcontractor or?
No, it was a town employee.
He's a town employee. All right. The four hours that he mentioned that he gets to spend in town, is that his decision or the board's decision?
It's a budget. They handle a budget that we have for that now. In normal cases, he's able to conduct his business and move on. He works for several other towns.
Yeah, I knew that. So with that in mind then, him not being able to, he made the comment that he doesn't have the capability of generating prints and copies. I mean, you could send stuff to Staples on a, on a drive and they'll print out 50. and they'll print out 50 copies of everything you want. I don't know, you have that capability here at the offices to do that?
I don't work in the office.
I, I assume that there is, there is some capacity with the printer that we have in town.
Yeah, because if he only has four hours, for him to accomplish getting all this is, it's kinda inefficient, if you really ask me, when this day and age where things can be transferred electronically. You have them within ten...
We have the budgetary constraints and stuff like that. And, and the fact that it was, it was difficult to find him as a zoning administrator.
In interim.
Yeah, he's kind of interim.
As a zoning administrator, because we've looked for, we've looked for, for a long time to try and find somebody that was willing to take that responsibility. And when our, our previous zoning administrator got sick. And fortunately, we were able to get him kind of basically just as our other zoning administrator had to leave.
And if I may, a comment that came in from our town clerk virtually said that, so Jonas is available on the days when he's not here via phone and email. I mean, he's, he's accessible, but I think that he's budgeted. The, the annual budget that's established for that role and then the rate that he gets for that position only really work out to an average of four hours per week. So, thank you, Deb.
If, if there was a full-time position held by a zoning administrator, would the budget be greater than?
Probably not, because most of the time he can accomplish... The bu, the history has shown that that's, that that's ample time and ample budget. Um, this...
Just see...
This, this project has a lot more going on and, and the Slate Ridge has a lot more going on. So it's, it's occupied a lot more time than normally we, we've been used to. Frank?
The, the printing issue. Imagine he's gonna get stuff from Act 250 that's not paper. It's gonna be PDFs by email. And, and that's just way to go about it, because you may not even have to print it out. But if something needs to be printed out, you could, if, you could probably easily email it to the town clerk and see if there's staffing fine. If they just start printing and walk away and just pull it out and put it in a bin for him when he gets here. He doesn't have to stand around and print, print.
Right.
It could be done with existing staff when they have a lull, probably.
I'm sure there, if I, I'm sure there are ways to work on the printing. I think he's probably just feeling overwhelmed and, but I think...
Right.
All right. I wasn't sure how the zoning administrator was part of the town or not. Thank you. That's all.
And we have the ARPA funds.
All right, so this is, I've, I've been working on our little flyer that we're, a survey that we're hoping to send out. And so from last time, when it was just a little list, it now has a little picture on the top. This is the picture from our website, by the way, of our, of our town hall. And I made a little table and things like that. Um, on our list, uh, I didn't get any additional comments from folks on this, so I just went with the comments that I'd gotten last time we looked at the document in person. I did add in, someone had mentioned that they would like to have an, for further information, here's where you can go. So I put on VLCT's page, which talks about these funds, which has a very extensive FAQ. So if anyone wants to look more at it, who gets this, they can go there. And it also has the information of how to email us at the bottom and also how to attend the meeting. The meeting times and agendas are on the Town of Palet webpage, so I put a link for that. From the list of ideas, I deleted, last time we spoke about these funds, there was some discussion about the difficulty of giving out any funds to individuals or businesses, that that would involve extra work for us. So I deleted those off of the list. And I don't know if there are any other things on this list that we don't wanna have on the list or if we like all these eight items to be on the, to be on the list here. And my thought then, I also made a digital copy, uh, Google Forms version of this, which I sent around a link as well. It's the exact same stuff, just in digital form for folks who wanna do that. My thought would then would be that since Deb has the list of all the folks in town who she sends out the town meeting information to, that we could just send this out um, with any, with any edits that we want to have to it. And then of, of course, the digital one, we could put in the town newsletter. Um, we can send it around to the town mailing list, um, put it on, mention it on Facebook and all that stuff.
We might be able to have a physical copy available maybe in a clear plastic screen or something outside of the town hall. And it can be, trying to think of a way to not have it clog up the, you know, the usual, like the Dropbox or whatever, but maybe there could be a drop-off point here at the town hall if anybody wanted to come pick up a physical copy and do it that way. So that way, we're not excluding anybody that doesn't have internet access or doesn't feel comfortable creating or completing an online survey.
Yeah, or who doesn't get it in the mail.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think all those ways would be good to just make sure we get as much feedback.
There is old ballot boxes, I think. Could be refashioned.
Yeah, 'cause unlike the Dropbox, which is, you know, for money.
Right.
These wouldn't have to be in a very secure location. Nobody's name is on this, right? So what, what does everyone think about the, the information on here? Is there any edits that we should make? Anything we should change?
I wonder about two things. The wastewater treatment plant to reduce cost to town and users.
We could, we could add that. Yep. To users and town.
To users and town. And then to down, give money to Otter Creek Communications. I think if we say support.
Okay, support, okay. Support Otter Creek Communications Union District in building out broadband. Yeah. Because, I mean, honestly, what we would be doing would be giving some of the funds to them because we don't have the capacity to do it. But that sounds better. You're right. Support.
Sounds like we're a little bit more careful with the money.
Give the money to, support.
Picture of a wheelbarrow.
Is there a date that we might like to have this back by?
Um, I guess that would depend on when we can send it out. I mean, how, we, we aren't in a giant rush to, to spend the money right away because we do have years to, but it would be nice to give a deadline for this. I mean, I would say within somewhere between like two weeks to a month after we send it out.
You can say within six weeks. It's kind of like saying, I'll be back in 10 minutes on your door, but not saying when you're leaving. Classic office trick.
Well, we probably should, we should try and get it in like by the beginning of November, because then we'll be into budgets.
Okay.
And stuff like that.
Yeah, well, in that case, let's tell them by October 15. Because when you tell people a date, they give it the week after.
Yeah.
So.
That sounds reasonable.
By October 15. Yeah, I've been a teacher. If you want something on Friday, you tell them what to do on Wednesday.
Gotta load it up.
Yep.
preload your...
And then we have a meeting scheduled for the 19th, so.
Yep.
That will be.
Everything else looks, looks good, so.
I think it looks great.
All right.
Say, send it.
I will make those and... And so I'll, I'll make, I'll make these changes and redo this one and the digital documents. And then I can send them to Deb.
Nice.
Okay. Because I've already been getting some, um, people have heard informally that this is happening and so I've already been getting some people contacting me and saying, what if we did this? And so far, all the suggestions are things we can't do. So I'm eager to get this out with the list of things we can and can't do with the money, so folks can start thinking in the right direction.
Kind of energy channeled in the...
Exactly.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Any more discussion on that? Eric?
Yeah, um, Eric from the Planning Commission again. And I just wanted to make a comment that I think it's great you're being proactive in this manner. I'm the ARPA...
Yeah, you're the liaison, aren't you, for RPC?
Yes. So that's why I stuck around for this piece, because, um, I'm just trying to get a feel for where towns throughout county are at, so.
Well, here, we should show him a copy of this, so you can see what...
I was gonna say, if you can get a copy.
Yeah, make a, make a copy.
I couldn't fill that much.
I can make it for you.
Oh, great, thank you. Um, so yeah, just, just to reiterate, I think you are being proactive and, um, I think this is a good way to solicit, you know, public input. And, um, like you said, I can imagine that some calls that are coming in are not in the relevant eligibility. Um, so vetting those is, is, um, you know, a process. But as, you know, Treasury's final rule is, oh, I guess I'll pass on. Treasury has issued the interim final rule.
Yeah.
The final rule is expected this fall.
Okay.
But like you mentioned, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns resources page has, um, a lot of useful information and tools for working through the process.
Yeah, I attended, um, their webinar. Actually, two of their different webinars on, um, put on by VLCT on this, which is where I got sort of the list of possible things from, from looking at their stuff.
Okay. And just keep a, you know, keep an eye out too, because there will be some, um, future webinars I think come out in, um, October.
Do you, um, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm directly addressing somebody. Do you happen to know when the, um, when the final numbers about the money that's coming, that was designated for counties? When we'll have the numbers for that?
Yeah, I can, um, I have those breakdowns, so.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, 'cause I, I wasn't, I was able to find the document online that had the original numbers, but not the breakdowns for what additional we're expecting.
Yep, so I can send you one that details the NEU money, which was the first round, to receive your first...
Yeah, we got the first bit of that.
Yep, and so the county money has been allocated and I can get you, um, the allocation tomorrow.
Okay, that would be great. Then I can update this number here, because this is the amount we were... So, update amount. Yes, yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any more questions on that? Good, new business.
So, um, and I don't know if, Eric might be able to speak more to this, but Stephanie from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission sent out an email this afternoon letting municipalities know that there are currently several grant opportunities available for emergency management and mitigation projects. So the four that are highlighted are, is the VTран's Municipal Highway and Stormwater Mitigation Project. And potentially eligible projects would include planning studies for stormwater inventories, salt and sand sheds, bank stabilization, culvert replacement and resizing, stream bank stabilization, detention ponds, check dam, swirl separators. The list goes on. There's no program cap on the amount of funding granted to a specific project, but there is a 20% local match. Applications must be received, um, before 1:00 PM on October 1st. I'll forward this to all of you. The, um, the next one is FEMA's Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities, BRIC, Brick. Potentially eligible projects include project scoping, um, so on and so forth. There's also FEMA's Flood Mitigation Assistance Program. And there's also the ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which we have covered. So I'll send, I just got that email today and I'll send it to all of you, but just something maybe we can add to discuss once we've had more time to digest it, if there's any of those that we'd like to pursue, that we'd be eligible for.
Oh, and if I can just give a update on the municipal planning grant. So, um, the, the various other grants that we're applying for, we sent in the letter of intent for the VORA Trail Grant, about the Welcome Center. Uh, I've been talking to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, specifically to Amanda, about, about a planning grant. We were discussing that the property that used to be Duchy's and that we're getting the Brownfield Study done on that first. The next step then, which is due by November 1st, is to apply for a municipal planning grant, which would be, um, and they think it's a very, um, at top to, top to her and to, um, and to Ed both. And they thought it's a very strong application for this grant. And what the grant would be, would be for specifically to plan what to do with that particular lot, but slightly more broadly to make, to, to make a master plan for West Palet Village. So that would include both the, um, this part, the particular lot and then sort of a looking more broadly at the center of West Palet, the designated village center, and, and doing some planning going forward with that. So, yeah, um, Amanda is pretty certain that she can help me pull it together. She's gonna do the initial bit and then she's going to send it to me. Uh, that municipal planning grant is also, is that also a 20% match? Do you know off the top? You're not the one working on those.
Yeah.
There is, there is a match with that, with that one. And I think it's up to about 22,000 is the amount for that grant. So.
So it would be 4,400 if...
If we got the full amount.
Right. We got the full amount. So that wouldn't be too bad to...
Yeah. There is an additional grant, um, which is made available only this year, which is for bylaw modernization. And I would like very much if we could apply for that one as well. It probably wouldn't be as much, but it would allow the Planning Commission, so putting on my Planning Commission hat here, it would allow the Planning Commission to do some significant updates to the bylaws in regard to housing. Because we've, I know that we've talked about some of the difficulties with, um, with building in West Palet having to do with some of the setbacks in some of the ways the zoning is written. Makes it difficult for people to put buildings of different sizes onto the small lots. And that there are, there are some ways to update the zoning to make it easier for people to build, which might then make it easier for people to get on the wastewater. You know, just, just in general, ways to make housing more affordable and easier to do in our town. And so if we applied for that grant, we could get someone to help the Planning Commission, write these updates to the bylaws. And then it, we can do it if we don't get a grant, but I imagine we won't get to that until sometime late next year. Whereas if we were able to get a grant to pay someone to do part of this, um, update for housing, for affordable housing, that would be very helpful. So. I guess I'm just sort of asking this let board for the permission to go ahead with both of those.
That sounds like very positive, positive choices, you know, options for us to, to get some better activity down there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited about all the grants we're applying for.
That's, I think we should keep rolling on that.
Okay.
I mean, at this point, we're, we're not even ready to actually file for the grants, right? You're just kinda doing the legwork? Do you, do you need anything from us at this point?
Not at this point, no. Um, uh, Rutland Regional Planning Commission can work together on the municipal planning grant.
Super.
Yeah, so it'll be a, in fact, they can do a lot of the legwork for that. So.
Frank?
Because there's a class share, you're gonna have to approve that.
Eventually, but at this, tonight at this meeting, we don't have to do anything yet, until it gets to the point of applying for the, actually applying for the grant or accepting the grant. It's, actually, we don't even, we don't spend any money till we accept the grant.
Yeah.
Right? So. Anything else on the new business? Anything else for public comment?
Anybody on the web have anything to add? Oh. How many days? This is Bob and Martha. Um, how many days after our meeting can we expect the video available on youtube/pegTV? How many days after our meeting can we expect the video available on youtube/pegTV?
Less than a week.
That one's on you.
Generally, it's less than a week, I believe, Martha and Bob. I can check in with PegTV though and let you know.
No, you just make it, right? I'm just making, it's up to those other guys in the office. Good answer.
The camera person's not permitted to speak. Sorry. Thanks, Deb.
Anything else? I need a motion.
I need to do it.
Make the motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. Have a good evening.